Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Campus Philly, Deborah Drummond, President, Kiana Butler, Student, Community College of Philadelphia, Jalen Blot, Student, Temple, Rabin Ridge Singhani, Student, Haverford College, David Silver, Temple, Temple 13, Social Communities Administrator, Bentley Systems, Amanda Beerdaw, Brynmar College, with 14 welcoming community coordinator, Liberty Lutheran. Thank you very much. Please identify yourself and begin your testimony.
Thank you, Chairwoman Blackwell. My name is Deborah Diamond. I'm the President of Campus Philly. Thank you to President Clark, to Education Committee Chairman Blackwell, and all distinguished members of City Council. I am the President of Campus Philly, as I said, and I'm pleased to have this opportunity to tell you about Campus Philly's mission, our service to students, and our impact. More than 10 years ago, a group of city, higher education, and civic leaders came together to address a challenge, sorry, a challenge that Philadelphia had. We were a college town that didn't feel like a college town. With so many colleges and universities in the city and surrounding suburbs, Philadelphia should have been teaming with college students' influence and involvement. They should have been volunteering for our nonprofits, attending our arts and culture venues, and connecting to our employers for jobs so that they could stay after they graduated. None of this was happening in a strategic or organized way, and as a result, students didn't have a great impression of Philadelphia, they were not invested in the place they lived for their four years of college, and they didn't see themselves living here after they graduated. Much of that has changed in the 10 years since Campus Philly became an independent nonprofit. We started our work with seven or eight college partners, and now we have more than 30. We visit campuses more than 100 times each year for new student orientations, trainings for residents' life staff, and career events. We're in touch with more than 100,000 college students throughout the year through social media, our email newsletter to 25,110 students, visits to CampusPhilly.org, and in-person events like our College Fest. And the result is a transformed college experience for students in Philadelphia and a transformed Philadelphia. Now, when you come to college in Philadelphia, arts and culture comes free with Campus Philly's Open Arts Program, which was started with a Knight Arts Challenge grant and continues to receive operating support from Comcast. Forty-three arts and culture partners have offered 4,618 tickets for free to 5,188 student members since the program was launched in September 2013. More venues, students, and ticket offers are added each week. Any college student at a Campus Philly partner institution is able to enroll in the program. Campus Philly also works to ensure that students are prepared for the workforce through our internship programs. In 2010, only 63% of college students had internships as part of their college experience. By 2014, that figure was 81%. It's our goal that coming to college in Philadelphia means having an internship experience in college that prepares you for the workforce and connects you to the city and regional employers for a post-graduation job. Campus Philly provides the only regional internship matching website where internship positions just for our college students are posted. The site is free for both employers and students, and over the past year, 4,257 students were active on the site, searching for 3,565 opportunities posted. We educate students about industries that are strong in Philadelphia through in-person events with employers. In the past year alone, we've focused on careers in finance, the creative economy, and tech, and have partnered with the African-American Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Choice Awards, the Independence Business Alliance, and all of our partner colleges and universities to introduce a wide range of students to employers, LGBT college students, students of color, and others. Finally, when students come to school in Philadelphia, we want them to be able to see themselves here as residents and citizens, and they do. In 2010, only 55% of college students said they would recommend Philadelphia as a place to live. In 2014, that figure was 73%, and 64% of recent graduates in 2014 stayed in Philadelphia after they graduated. Philadelphia has been transformed by the influx of young, college-educated residents, and many of these new residents are graduating from our colleges and universities. Campus Philly can do even more in the coming years to ensure that Philadelphia thrives as a college town and post-graduation choice for college graduates. We have three specific goals for the coming years. Accelerate internships so that we see 90% of students having an internship experience in college up from the current level of 81%, including adult college students like those served by Graduate Philadelphia, and increasing specifically paid internship opportunities. Most of those 81% of students with internships did not have paid internships, and that hampers some students from having that internship experience altogether. Develop collaborations with Philadelphia's only citywide college access programs, Philly Goes to College and the Graduation Coach Campaign, to serve our high school students once they enter college, to let them know there's a Campus Philly to help them with their college success. Create a civic engagement track to Campus Philly programming that parallels open arts in arts and culture and our internship programming so that students have a way of volunteering, getting involved, and transforming the Philadelphia they go to school in. We look forward to continuing and expanding our work in the coming year and keeping you informed about the difference we're making in the lives of students and the impact we're having on educational attainment and the workforce in Philadelphia. We have three current students and one recent graduate here with us today to tell their stories of how Campus Philly has helped them to get to know, get involved, and launch their career in Philadelphia. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Kiana Butler, and I'm a student at Community College of Philadelphia. I want to thank City Council President Clark, Education Committee Chairwoman Blackwell, and all the distinguished members of City Council for providing me with the opportunity to speak about Campus Philly. I was born in North Philadelphia and moved to West Philadelphia when I was young. After being homeschooled for part of my high school education, I enrolled at Community College of Philadelphia, where I'm now a student and about to graduate in May 2015. I will graduate with my associate's degree, and I plan to pursue my bachelor's degree in fashion design at either Moore College for Art Design or Philadelphia University. When I started as a student at CCP, I immediately got involved in student leadership activities through the Philadelphia League Program, and I now serve as the first vice president of Student Government Association. I got involved in student leadership at CCP because I wanted to be a part of and shape my own college experience. I've been involved with Campus Philly because I wanted to be a part of and shape my Philadelphia experience as well. I met Campus Philly through the Black and Gold Bash, an event CCP holds to introduce students to groups on campus as well as off-campus that they might want to get involved with. Since then, I have been involved and volunteered for a number of Campus Philly programs, including the College Day on the Parkway, their fall finance career events, and the Arts and Culture Program, Open Arts. Though I grew up in Philadelphia, I found it easy to stay in my comfort zone as a new college student. When I got involved in Campus Philly programs, it led me out of my comfort zone to experience things I didn't think I would have on my own. From learning more about how to network with employers to experience the arts and cultures of the city, Campus Philly has taught me things that I didn't learn growing up here and didn't think I would experience through my classwork. I feel more a part of the city I call home and more ready to be someone who takes advantage of all that Philadelphia has to offer because of Campus Philly. I'm just one student, but that day Campus Philly came to Black and Gold Bash, they met hundreds of CCP students. Some of them are interested in arts and cultures like me and have joined Open Arts. Some of them are focused on getting an internship and have been to Campus Philly's career events, but all of them have been better connected to Philadelphia and more opportunities to build their futures here because of Campus Philly. I'd like to thank my school, Community College of Philadelphia, for investing in Campus Philly as a partner so that I have access to their programs. I would like to thank City Council and the City of Philadelphia for their support for Campus Philly so that students like me can launch their futures in Philadelphia. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to share my experience with you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Jalen Blot, and I'm a senior at Temple University. I first want to thank the distinguished members of the City Council for providing me with the opportunity to speak about being a college student in Philadelphia and about Campus Philly. So to give a little background, I was born in New York, and my family moved to the Poconos when I was younger, and when it came time for college, football brought me to Temple. But the opportunities that Temple provided allowed me to grow as a student and a Philadelphian in the four years of my undergraduate tenure. Though my academics are extremely important to me, as I'll be headed to a PhD program in organizational behavior this fall, what I've learned as a student in Philadelphia goes beyond the classroom. In fact, all of Philadelphia has become a classroom. I have participated in social entrepreneur-led hackathons to solve city issues. I run a Lucy Fund, a nonprofit focused on making metastatic cancer chronic, not deadly. I've organized an event called Battle on Broad, a musical event seeking to combine college campuses and the art of dance to raise money, and I serve as Director of Campus Life and Diversity through Temple Student Government. What these and other experiences have taught me is that Philadelphia truly is the city of brotherly love. Philadelphia encompasses so many different professional, social, and college communities that you might think it's difficult to build connections and be a part of other groups, but what I've found in Philadelphia is that people from different communities are remarkably open and welcoming to newcomers and students in particular. Campus Philly has been very pivotal in unlocking the various communities that exist in Philadelphia. When I was organizing the Battle on Broad event, they were the first organization I contacted to get students and dance groups from other schools aware of the event and onboard. When I was a summer intern at Lincoln Financial Group, Campus Philly's My Philly Summer Party connected me with other students interning at other employers that summer, and I learned even more about the range of opportunity in Philadelphia. Though Lincoln Financial Group wanted me back as an intern the next summer, that My Philly Summer event made me think of all the other professional experiences I could have in consequent summers, and that was one reason why I chose to do something different every summer since then. My academic work focuses on organizational behavior and the way that marginalized workers or groups can become part of a workplace in a more welcoming and effective way. One reason I find that such an interesting topic is because my experience as a student in Philadelphia has been large and great. I've knocked on various stores and employers, professional associations, nonprofits on the campuses, and I've had those stores open wide for me. One thing Philadelphia does extremely well is provide access to opportunity if you take the time and initiative to find out what's out there. Campus Philly is an example of that. No other city thought to create an organization that helped college students meet other college students and meet Philadelphia at the same time. But when Philadelphia did that 10 years ago, it made it possible for students like me to have an experience as a student that I don't think I would have gotten any other place in another city or location. I've learned my experience as a Temple student and a Philadelphian over the past four years, and I'm grateful to the city for supporting Campus Philly and making so many varied, important, and impactful experiences possible for me. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you very much. The chair notes that Councilman Brian O'Neill is here. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Councilman?
Good morning. Good afternoon. Whoa. The second shift has not kicked in yet. Let me say that as a former higher ed professional, having worked in higher education as an admissions director for Penn State University for the Philadelphia region, I have enormous respect for what Campus Philly is doing, and have paid a lot of attention to it over the past 10 years. And so when I, we can walk through Center City in the evening, I see the influx of millennials and campus, college, college kids. It's quite, quite an affirmation that we are a hip city, and now the world knows about it. What I'm interested in knowing is what are some of your immediate, when I hear the percentages of where you want to get to, from 81% to 90% is what I heard? What are a couple of the strategic ideas you plan to implement to move you towards that number?
Yes, we, we're, we use an online platform to connect students to internship opportunities. It's something that Campus Philly actually inherited in 2004 from Innovation Philadelphia, and we've been maintaining it the past 10 years. Technology has changed over the past 10 years, and we're about to relaunch a new internship matching platform in the fall of 2015. In addition, one thing that Campus Philly has created over the last, I'd say, three years are more in-person programs to introduce students to employers. One challenge that Philadelphia has relative to other cities drawing our talent away is that we don't have a signature industry, like New York has finance, or the West Coast has technology or entertainment. And for our college students, what we've found is that we have to demonstrate to them, show them the employers, let them hear from recent graduates who are in industries that are strong and growing, like finance, like tech, like healthcare. So over the last few years, we've produced more of those events. So what we see for the next few years is, with a relaunched online platform, we'll have the capacity to highlight and feature more businesses, more industry sectors, and to create more programs around those businesses and industry sectors that do the in-person introductions that students and employers need.
Do what linkages exist with the Greater Philadelphia Chamber of Commerce or with PIDC that really have a pulse on what the future holds?
Yeah, there are two, two primary connections. One, our board member Carol DeFreeze is here, and she's a vice president at PIDC, so we have that linkage at the leadership level. Similarly, the Director of the CEO Council for Growth, Clara Greenwood, sits on our board. So at the leadership level, we have the opportunity to share initiatives and impact. Through PIDC, we hear about companies that are looking to locate in Philadelphia, including companies that are looking to open satellite offices, and you'll hear soon from a recent graduate who's working for one of those companies, Bentley Systems. And so we work with Ivy Olisch at PIDC and with Carol DeFreeze at PIDC to learn about those companies coming into the city and talk to them about Campus Philly and the access to talent we provide. With the Chamber of Commerce, we've actually started a conversation with them about, with the relaunched website, the opportunity that provides to their membership to post for interns, and even to leverage the technical expertise that Campus Philly has, and I believe Jen DeVore is here, our internship expert on staff is here, and she provides technical assistance especially to small and medium-sized companies that don't really know how to create an internship position and how to make it valuable. So when we talk about accelerating internships, we really mean increasing the number of companies that are offering internships, and that sometimes that means showing them and holding their hand a bit in how to do that in a way that's cost-effective for them, benefits the student, and provides a pipeline for a future employee.
How is Campus Philly funded?
We have four main funding streams. The colleges and universities, the 31 colleges and universities that are partners pay in and invest in Campus Philly. We have a corporate membership program because ultimately they're the beneficiaries of our success, so we have a corporate membership program that provides a significant portion of our funding, grants fund specific things like Open Arts, and the new internship matching platform is provided by a grant from Bentley Systems and the Knight Foundation.
Okay.
And then the City of Philadelphia.
What, what percentage is, is the city's contribution?
It's about a third.
A third, and it comes through the secretary, Department of Education, the Office of Education?
No, we're funded by, through the Commerce Department.
Okay. All right then, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
We have two more, another student.
To Council President Clark, Education Committee Chairman Blackwell, and all members of City Council, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. My name is Rabin Ridge Singhani, and I am a senior at Haverford College. My story begins in Freehold, New Jersey, where I grew up. My family and I visited Philadelphia a number of times as tourists when I was growing up, and my feeling about the city from those visits was that it was a youthful city with a lot of great sights to see and a lot of great colleges to attend. When I was accepted at Haverford College, I was very glad that Philadelphia would be part of my extended college experience. Little did I know how much attending school so close to Philadelphia would mean to me. I had thoughts of medical school when I entered college and of majoring in biology, but after my sophomore year, I knew that wasn't for me, and I was trying to figure out what direction I wanted to go in. Through my career service office at Haverford, I learned of a Campus Philly program called Philly Startup Scholars. The program matched college students with paid summer internships at Philadelphia startups and provided interns with access to Campus Philly's My Philly Summer programming and even a luncheon with Mayor Nutter. After applying for and being chosen for the program, I learned that it was made possible by a startup PHL grant provided by the City of Philadelphia, so thank you. My internship took place at Rowan Win, a startup at 19th and Arch Street founded by a Wharton MBA. The company assists its clients in capturing utility rebates from utility companies for upgrading to energy-efficient measures. That summer experience was truly eye-opening for me. I lived in West Philadelphia and came to work each day to an incredible environment. Another intern and I redesigned Rowan Win's website. I produced financial reports for the company and restructured the databases to make them more user-friendly. The work was collaborative, meaningful, and engaging, and it showed me that I had an exciting future even if I didn't become a biology major and head to medical school. My focus in college changed after that summer. I became a math major and have had the opportunity to take classes at the University of Pennsylvania to further my knowledge in math and finance. I participated this past fall in Campus Philly's event for students interested in finance careers and learned even more about the range of opportunity available in Philadelphia for a career in finance. There were so many things I didn't know when I was choosing a college at the age of 18, but now, from my perspective as a senior, I'm very grateful to my 18-year-old self for choosing Haverford College and Philadelphia as a place to go to school. Though my college is a small one, Campus Philly was there to open my world up to larger opportunities. From my internship at Rowan Win to being able to take classes at Penn, to learning more about finance careers in Philadelphia, my experience in college has been transformed by the opportunities that Philadelphia provides to students and that Campus Philly is there to connect me and others to. Thank you for your time and for the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is David Silver, and I am the Social Communities Administrator at Bentley Systems, a global Philadelphia-based engineering firm with offices in Malvern and, more recently, in Center City, Philadelphia. I graduated from Temple University in 2013. I wanted to thank City Council President Clark, Education Committee Chairwoman Blackwell, and all the distinguished members of City Council for providing me with the opportunity to speak about being a college student in Philadelphia and about Campus Philly. I can confidently say that I would not be where I am today were not for Campus Philly. In 2012, Campus Philly produced its second Campus Philly Crawl. It was a unique career event that took college students on a walk-through university city to see startup and incubator companies and introduced students to the startup ecosystem that was growing in Philadelphia. I was already interested in entrepreneurship from my startup Broadstream Music Group, and I was excited to see other college students interested in startups and to see the infrastructure for entrepreneurs growing. Bentley Systems was one of the companies involved in the Campus Philly Crawl, and I was able to meet their Human Resource Leader, Robin Brenza. After talking with Robin about the business that I had started and my advertising and communications major in college, she thought there might be an opportunity for me at Bentley. I had a job offer from Bentley before I graduated, and for the past year and a half, I have managed Bentley's social media presence, applying what I learned in college and in my business to expand Bentley's presence on social media. My story is just one of many. Campus Philly produces five or six career events each year, like the Campus Philly Crawl that I attended, and hundreds or more of students attended each of these events. Philadelphia isn't easily identified with a signature industry like New York is with finance or LA is with entertainment. As a result, students not, might not realize the depth and diversity of employment opportunities that exist for them in Philadelphia. Campus Philly's career events change all that for students. They let us know that there are vibrant industries with employers eager to hire college students for exciting jobs, and, as in my case, these events provide students with introductions to employers that are invaluable for getting hired. In 2013, the year I graduated, unemployment for college graduates between 25 and 34 was only 3.6%. The opportunity for college graduates in Philadelphia is vast, but finding that right opportunity is not always easy. Applying for jobs online can sometimes feel like a black hole, and as a college student, you don't really have the network to rely on to tell you about entry-level opportunities. Campus Philly really functions as that network, informing us about growing industry sectors and making the introductions that we need to get hired. I'm a big technology fan, and I make a living through technology, but in the end, my future was paved through an in-person event and an in-person introduction, and a Campus Philly program made it all possible. I'm grateful to the city for supporting the existence of Campus Philly and to Campus Philly itself for helping me build a life here in Philadelphia. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to speak with you today.
Thank you very much. Were there any questions or comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last group, Philly Goes to College, Leana Cabral, Director, Kathy White, Technical Assistance Manager, Malik Brown, Diversified Community Services, and Lauren Bowman, Philly Goes to College Fellow. Let me thank everyone on the committee for their patience. This is our last group, and then we will conclude our hearing.
Hello again. I'm not Leana Cabral. I will be testifying on her behalf because she is in the final weeks of her parental leave. This is her testimony. I will just be reading it for her today. So thank you again for having us, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about Philly Goes to College.
Identify, you'll identify yourself again.
Yes, my name is Sia Hormozzi, and I am here on behalf of Leana Cabral, the Director of Philly Goes to College. Today, only 25% of the residents of Philadelphia hold a college degree, and that has risen from 18% in 2010. This alarming statistic illustrates a long-term challenge to not only the city's economic viability in the 21st century economy, but also its reputation as a vibrant cultural hub. According to census data, Philadelphia is now ranked 71st out of 100 of the largest metropolitan areas in the U.S. in baccalaureate degree attainment. That has risen from 92nd in 2008. We've made some progress, but we have a long way to go. It is essential that Philadelphia's residents continue to pursue academic excellence because the city's economy is becoming more reliant on these highly skilled, high-paying jobs which are only attainable to those with college degrees. Philly Goes to College was launched in 2010 and serves as a crucial citywide resource for residents of any age who would like a college degree. We promote and support a college-going culture among citizens by providing high-quality college-access information that is current, comprehensive, and accessible. We do everything we can to reach out to Philadelphia residents, encourage them to attain a college degree, and connect them with the information to make it happen. Philly Goes to College provides a clearinghouse of quality and vetted resources which are also truly comprehensive. Our website, print materials, and workshops offer information to low-income students, first-generation students, undocumented students, veterans, students with disabilities, returning citizens, and more. Since 2010, Philly Goes to College has engaged more than 30,000 students, parents, and mentors through in-person workshops and presentations, along with innumerable phone calls, website hits, and in-person visits to our office. Over time, PG2C has evolved into a unique and critical initiative that engages with Philadelphia residents unlike any other resource in the city. We do this in three core ways. First, we offer workshops directly to citizens, meeting them where they are, in schools, libraries, after-school programs, and faith-based organizations, to name a few. We also train the staff at various organizations, bolstering their services to include college access. The second thing we do is offer three main citywide events, including Students with a Goal, or SWAG Week, Top of the Class, and College Awareness Month, which are outlined in more detail in the packets you received before testimony today. The third is our new initiative, launched this past October, which is called Connect to College, a new service delivery model in response to the lack of citywide college-access services, the cuts of counselors and student success centers, and the low college attainment rates of Philadelphians. While Philadelphia has a vibrant college prep community, only a fraction of students and parents needing support are served by these programs. Most of these college prep programs serve niche populations or students who meet specific eligibility requirements. Connect to College fills this gap and is now the only, only, citywide initiative providing comprehensive services to all Philadelphians. It is a three-pronged approach. The first is a model of partnering with already existing community-based organizations and their staffs. These organizations are already serving members of the communities in which they are located. We've created and implemented training, materials, and technical assistance to the staff at the computer labs in these organizations so that they can add college access to the services they already provide. In order to do this, we have leveraged existing city investments in key spots and library hotspots. In October, Connect to College launched with 20 of these partner sites. Partner sites per- support, application essay writing, scholarship searches and applications, and financial aid. The second mode of service is an interactive text message service. We know that more and more Philadelphians are accessing information on their phones through text message alerts. Philly Goes to College has therefore leveraged those digital avenues to provide instantaneous and customized college-access information to all residents. We have partnered with a local firm, Textizen, and are now sending targeted, demographic-specific text messages which will connect users to resources for scholarships and other vital college-access information most applicable to their circumstances, as well as connect text message recipients with college-access organizations closest to their zip code where they live and best equipped to address their needs. Our third mode of service is through our newly redesigned website. On this site, we created a route-finding tool which will direct Philadelphia residents, again, to customized college-access resources based on their individual needs. Philly Goes to College has adapted to the needs of Philadelphians. The funding crisis and lack of citywide college-access services that precipitated this call to action is troubling, but it also demanded that we rethink our college-access work, and in doing so, we have come together to create a more efficient, diversified, and relevant approach. Philadelphia residents now have access to college-going support and information in convenient and familiar places. The notion that college is a viable option for all residents will become normalized as this new model and the knowledge it holds spreads. As this initiative grows and as it becomes further embedded into the city, the services will only improve and expand, and a communal sense of responsibility around offering this information to all Philadelphia residents will hopefully be embraced. Philly Goes to College is at the forefront of this movement. Thank you again, Chairwoman Blackwell and members of the Education Committee for your time and continued support. Next, I'd like to introduce Malik Brown, who is the Director of Dixon House, one of our Connect to College Partner Labs, who will speak about his partnership with us. And then Kathy White, one of our Technical Assistance Managers, who provides that assistance to those Partner Labs. And finally, Lauren Bowman, one of our Philly Goes to College Fellows, who has facilitated our college-going workshop to over 1,300 students, including all of the high school students in the Parks and Recreation Summer Program and all of the Philly Youth Network's Work Ready participants, and she'll testify about her experience as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Feel free to identify yourself. Welcome and begin your testimony.
Yes, good afternoon. My name is Malik Brown, and I am here speaking on behalf of Diversified Community Services. Chairwoman Blackwell and distinguished council members of the Education Committee, good afternoon. My name is Malik Brown. I am the Director of Diversified Community Services Dixon House. Our Executive Director, Otis Bullock, sends his regards. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We are thrilled to be a part of the Connect to College Initiative. On October 28th, 2014, we were honored to host Mayor Nutter and other city leaders at the Dixon House to launch this citywide initiative. Allow me to take a moment to share a little bit about Diversified Community Services. We are a community-based, multipurpose agency in Point Breeze. We serve nearly 8,000 children, youth, and adults each year. We provide a comprehensive array of services to children and adults in South Philadelphia, including early childhood education, out-of-school-time services for youth, IPS services for vulnerable youth, safety net services, housing, and workforce development. Our vision is a diverse, prosperous, and vibrant Point Breeze community where all residents are treated with dignity and respect, a community where the impacts of poverty are acknowledged and action is taken to empower those in need. To help move adults and families towards financial stability and self-sufficiency, we provide workforce education and training through our Key Spot Computer Lab. Over the last three years, we have helped close to 500 adults with resume development, job-search techniques, and interview preparation. In our current program year, we have helped 50 adults secure full-time employment. While we are encouraged by these numbers, we know that we have a lot more work to do to move the needle and to create real community impact. Many of our clients are low-income and low-skilled. Moreover, many of these adults do not have a post-secondary education or any type of industry credential. We strongly believe that Connect to College is a targeted and effective workforce solution that complements our current program offerings and capabilities. Unquestionably, the same clients who come to our Dixon House Community Center for help with utility assistance or foreclosure mitigation counseling or resume preparation could benefit from our Connect to College program offering. Financial literacy alone will not lift our community out of poverty. Job training alone will not move our adults and families to economic independence. These interventions, combined with accessibility and attainability of a post-secondary education, will more strongly position struggling families to achieve their life, financial, and professional goals. Our partnership with Connect to College is a win-win for all parties. Our goals, values, and interests are all aligned. With mutually reinforcing activities across all Connect to College sites, our combined efforts will yield a more competitive and more nimble workforce. Diversified Community Services has served South Philadelphia since the early part of the 20th century. More than 100 years later, Diversified's Dixon House Community Center is still one of the go-to places for adults and families to receive assistance. Every year, close to 2,000 adults and families walk through our community center doors. No matter what part of the city they come from, we have an open-door policy and commitment to high-quality customer service. The vast majority of adults and families who come through our doors are not looking for a handout, but they're looking for a hand up. They are desperately seeking a better life for their children. Many are unemployed or underemployed. Some are re-entering society for the first time in many years. The common thread for many of our clients is a lack of access, awareness, and information about higher education. Connect to College represents a complimentary solution that we can offer to community members and families. From the moment that the program was launched, we have received an overwhelming flood of interest from community stakeholders and partners. Adults and families are eager to learn more about higher education opportunities and to obtain guidance around what to do and how to get started. We are thrilled to be a part of this very exciting initiative. On a personal note, my first year of college was in 1996. I graduated in 2000 with a BA in economics and in 2002 with an MBA. When I first applied to college, I recall having a number of mentors and resources at my disposal. I was fortunate to have engaged parents, an older brother who paved the way, and supportive guidance counselors. For so many individuals, however, across multiple generations, these kinds of provisions are missing. On a number of occasions, I've had members of my own family reach out to me, eager to attain higher education but completely oblivious to how to get started. This is a common problem that permeates many households and communities across Philadelphia. The work and intent of Connect to College represents a significant leap forward in providing the most relevant and reliable information in order to connect our clients with the information they need. Dixon House looks forward to a continued strong partnership with Philly Goes to College on such a necessary citywide college infrastructure. Thank you, Chairwoman Blackwell and council members of the Education Committee for your continued support of Philly Goes to College and the Connect to College Initiative.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you very much.
Chairwoman Blackwell and distinguished council members of the Education Committee, thank you for allowing me to speak with you today about my work at Philly Goes to College. My name is Kathy White, and I'm the Technical Assistance Manager for Philly Goes to College's Connect to College or C2C Initiative. In October 2014, the last of Philadelphia's community-based college-access centers closed its doors. I'm the former manager of that center, so I have firsthand knowledge of how its closing impacts college access in the Philadelphia community. While managing the center, over 3,000 Philadelphians visited every year to utilize its services. Residents of all ages in Philadelphia could drop into the center and receive information and assistance on the college-going process. In my role, I encountered a variety of students that had unique backgrounds, making post-secondary access a challenge. Many students were first-generation students. Although these students' families may be supportive of them attending college, they are often not familiar with the process and therefore unable to support their students through it. Many adults utilized the center as a place to receive personal and patient guidance to access post-secondary education. They were often looking to post-secondary education for the first time to help advance their employment and career. I have also worked with returning citizens that are looking to further their education after incarceration. All of these students need an advocate to point them in the right direction, let them know the available options, and provide information about how education can benefit the beginning of a new life for themselves and their families. Students and families came in year after year as the center was a place they had come to know as the go-to for individual help in the college-going process. I've worked with people like Karen Buford, who started working with me on her associate's degree, then her bachelor's degree, and most recently, her master's degree. Karen is now taking more courses and recently reached out to me after finding out the center had closed. Through the Connect to College Initiative, I'm able to continue to assist her at one of our new C2C partner sites right in her neighborhood. Karen stated, "Without the one-on-one assistance, I don't think I could have made it through school." So many people I know have been misled and misguided in the process. Both my daughter Shayla and I can say we have been successful due to help received at the College Access Center. I'm happy that even though the center closed, we will still have somewhere to get the support we need. It means a lot, and we're truly grateful. The Connect to College Initiative is filling the gap left behind by the closing of the College Access Center. I'm in a unique position to be able to speak to how the C2C model has the potential to reach an even greater audience than the College Access Center, due to its strategically-placed 20 partner sites throughout the city, as well as the technology of our website and texting app. In training the staff of the various key spots, hotspots, and community-based organizations, the staff expressed how useful the material and resources we have put together will be for their communities. Many of the sites have stated that this is a component that will enhance the services they already provide. One staff member at one of the key-spot sites spoke to me about the many teens that come to her recreation center on a daily basis that just need the extra push to go further in their education. She is excited to be able to provide accurate college-going information to them, as well as to have the support of Philly Goes to College staff for college-access expertise. As the Technical Assistance Manager, I'm able to provide one-on-one appointments, constant support and help in planning college-related events at individual sites. For example, I met Ms. Rhonda Gibson and her daughter Sephra when facilitating a financial aid presentation at Parkway Center City High School in December. While there, I also spoke about the new Connect to College Initiative and was contacted by Ms. Gibson the next day. Ms. Gibson stayed in touch via text, and in January, we met at People's Emergency Center in Chairwoman Blackwell's district, a partner site in Ms. Gibson's neighborhood. I sat with her daughter, her and her daughter, and we went through the process step by step. I will be meeting Ms. Gibson again this week to follow up the work we started. Ms. Gibson made this statement about the Connect to College Initiative. "I feel great because I was able to get the help I needed to help my daughter further her education. My mother wasn't able to send me to college, and I appreciate that Kathy was reliable and patient with us going through this process for the first time. I was able to get all of my questions answered. This service is definitely needed by this city, and I hope it continues to grow." Ms. Gibson made a personal connection, and that's what this initiative is about. In the first few months of C2C's launch, I have been attending and speaking at various organizational events about the new initiative. There has been an outpouring of organizations that have shown interest in what we are doing but do not have the capacity to serve members of the public as a partner site. In response, we have developed what are now known as Resource Partners. We currently have three Resource Partners, including Jev's Human Services, Philadelphia Housing Authority, and the Free Library College Prep Team. These partners receive regular trainings and utilize the comprehensive binder of materials we provide for use with the clients they already serve. We are expecting the amount of Resource Partners to continue to grow, allowing for residents of Philadelphia to receive consistent, relevant, and reliable information about the post-secondary and educational opportunities available to them. We are now working on promoting Connect to College through various marketing efforts. We have printed materials that will be disseminated throughout Philadelphia schools, community-based organizations, and C2C partner sites. We are working with SEPTA to advertise the service along the Broad Street and Market-Frankfurt lines. Each site will receive signage promoting the service at their location, and we will be hosting Connect to College nights at our partner sites to introduce the initiative to the community. These events will be an opportunity for community members to learn about C2C, utilize our website, and try out the texting app. Philly Goes to College staff will be on-site for assistance with college application and financial aid completion. In addition, there will be tables hosted by a small group of college-admission representatives and Philadelphia resources. This work is very important to me personally because I'm a Philadelphia native and was a first-generation, low-income student. I know firsthand how a college degree can change a person's life. I realized my entire life's path was changed by the college experience. I was born in the Badlands of Philadelphia and was a troubled youth. I was fortunate to have one person point me in the right direction and give me the right information. Today, I stand before you as a productive member of my Philadelphia community. I am passionate about giving that experience back. It is important that Philadelphia continue to support programs such as Philly Goes to College so that others like myself have the opportunity to succeed. Chairwoman Blackwell and council members of the Education Committee, thank you again for your continued support of this worthwhile cause and program.
Thank you very much.
Hello and good afternoon. So, good afternoon, Councilwoman Blackwell and distinguished members of the Council's Committee on Education. My name is Lauren Bowman, and I am a fellow at Philly Goes to College since fall of 2013, as well as a current college student at Rexel University. It is an honor to speak with you today on my work with Philly Goes to College and the incredible impact it has on our community. Through sharing my experience, I hope to further elaborate the important work Philly Goes to College does for the city to support both students and adults with higher education aspirations, as well as personal and career development. I first became involved with Philly Goes to College through a student-leadership organization at Rexel University. What drew me to the program was its immediate and crucial impact on one of the most important factors that determines one's quality of life: education. As a third-generation college student with a supportive family and easy access to college resources, my story is an anomaly. Education inequality still exists, especially relating to college access, but through the work done at Philly Goes to College, students and adults are given the resources to start to fill those gaps. To best show the impact of Philly Goes to College, I will share a story providing services in the field. Over the past summer, I supported Work Ready, doing presentations for different departments, as well as providing college readiness information at their closing ceremony. Specifically, I did a lot of work bouncing around to different Parks and Recreation Work Ready presentations all across the city. I spoke to nearly 1,000 students, answering questions about the difference between grants and loans, where to find scholarships, and where to get support with SAT and ACT prep. At the end, the Director of the Parks and Recreation Work Ready Program enthusiastically expressed to me how impressed he was with the presentations and Philly Goes to College's dedication to our community. I share the story to show how important Philly Goes to College is, both to individual Philadelphians and the community as a whole. Philly Goes to College supports schools all across the city, as well as organizations and programs just like Work Ready by providing high-quality and reliable presentations on college access. We reach a broad range of students and help students on an individual level through answering questions during presentations and tabling events, providing materials on college readiness for students and adults, and answering emails and phone calls. Through this work, it has become clear that the community appreciates our work and needs our program. Philly Goes to College is intrinsic to the spreading of college-preparation information around the city. With teachers and counselors stretched thin with work, as well as the devastating closure of the College Access Center, Philly needs college-access resources. Philly Goes to College is intrinsic to the spreading of college-preparation information around the city. With teachers and counselors stretched thin with work, as well as the devastating closure of the College Access Center, Philly needs college-access resources. Most Philadelphia students do not share my story. They can't rely on their families and their schools alone in college preparation. If, as a city, we want to continue to challenge our youth to be engaged and educated citizens, we need not only to continue to support programs like Philly Goes to College, but invest more in educational, professional, and personal development programs. It is my hope to see Philly Goes to College continue to grow over the next few years. Great development has already occurred this past fall with the creation of Connect to College and should continue through the creation of more programs focused on specific college-access needs. This could include more financial aid resources and workshops and college essay tutoring. Thank you all for your hard work advocating for the best education system for Philadelphia's youth and listening to my experience with Philly Goes to College. It is through your support that we can continue to help our community succeed in college-preparation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I thank you all for your wonderful testimony today. Is there anyone else who needs or would like to testify today? Well, let me thank you. We have heard you well. We're very, very proud of all that you do and all that you have informed us about today, and certainly will do our part to certainly support this wonderful, wonderful program. Any comments from members of the committee?
Yes, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. Briefly talk about the faith-based piece, briefly, and when is College Awareness Month?
College Awareness, what, you want to answer that?
College Awareness Month?
College Awareness Month was last month.
Okay.
And so, what we did was we create a calendar that is accessible on our website, and so we are in touch with all of the college-going organizations in the city to find out when they're having PAFSA workshops, when they're having college fairs, all of the college-going events that are happening in the city. We compile and make available through social media and our website.
Okay.
So, that was last month.
Okay.
And we actually do that every month. One month is called College Awareness Month, but really, every day is College Awareness Day at Philly Goes to College. That's what we do every day, every week, every month, through our website, through social media.
Okay.
And in terms of faith-based organizations...
Very specifically, how many churches are involved and what pockets are they in?
Sure. So, I'm not the Director of Philly Goes to College. I'm just here testifying on her behalf. So, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but I am happy to get those numbers. She returns on Monday and to submit them to Chairwoman Blackwell's office so that you can have specifically those numbers and where they're located.
So, please.
And I can speak as far as Connect to College because we're in the marketing phases. I do know that for us, there are some faith-based organizations that we're strategically targeting, and those are some of the mega-churches, like Enoch, Tabernacles. So, those would be places that we would be targeting to make sure that we're disseminating information about partner sites that are in their area, and we are in northwest Philadelphia in the West Oak Lane Branch Library, and then we're also in Mallory Recreation and Waterview Recreation. So, we are in that area, and we will be targeting them.
Okay. All right. So, if you could please submit to the chair, I need to see the budgets of all these programs and where the links are, the links, the connectors are with the programs from a budget standpoint. We have the narrative, but I need to see the budget.
So, I can say to you that currently, right now, there is no budgetary link between each of our programs, and that's one of the reasons why we're here. We work separately, when you look at our finances, but we work together consistently in partnership, but we're not resourced to do so.
Okay.
So, that's part of what we're here to talk with you about today because we are consistently, we are a pipeline and have been operating as a pipeline unofficially ad hoc for a very long time, but we have not been able to optimize those partnerships because we're not resourced. There is no linkage resource.
Okay.
So, that hopefully answers your question, but we can submit our individual budgets and where we get our funding individually, which is not linked to you as soon as this hearing goes over.
Okay. Coupled with the information from the Commerce Department. Did I not hear that one-third of someone's budget comes from the Commerce Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Philly graduate of Philadelphia, get ready for college.
Okay. So, the broader question is, I'd like to see the budgets of all programs that testified here today.
Sure.
And if any linkages exist, then show that by way of the submitted documents.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And we thank you all for coming, and we're very glad that you have come together to realize all that you have in common, all that you share to help students move forward. Having said that, again, we thank you. This will conclude our public hearing, and thank you all for being here. Thank you, members of the committee.
Thank you.[1754.35][1754.35][music]